Presidente, I'm going to ask you to retire. I want to ask the Vice President and the Senator Mario Ma. I want to ask the leader of the Senate, the Deputy Secretary of the House, the Senator Selmar Tialguk. I want to say that we have to retire. We have to retire. But I want to tell you that we have to retire. We have to retire. Mr. President.
Senator Lencer Vasilius.
Yes.
Senator Rubai Gikwa Inabo.
Yes.
Senator Stevenson Che Kwartey.
Yes.
Senator Tite Imruel Monsau.
Yes.
Senator Marco Ebra Rudim.
Yes.
Senator Umi Sabau.
Yes.
Senator Gasogui El Topsonino.
Yes.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal. Senator Salvador Sadoy Talams.
Yes.
Senator Meisorn Yerban Al Wips.
Yes.
Leader of the Senate, Deputy Secretary of the House.
Yes.
Vice President Kraye Mariur.
Yes.
President Jontz Pablis.
Yes.
Mr. President.
I want to tell you that Senator Tabalwal is excused. He can retire. The leader of the Senate, Deputy Secretary of the House, will retire. Senator Deputy.
President, I'm going to tell you that I'm retiring, but I want to tell the President and the Senators to retire. I want to tell the Senate to retire. I want to tell the Senate to retire. I want to tell the Senate to retire.
I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to retire. I want to retire.
I want to tell the President that I'm retiring. I want to tell the President that I'm retiring. I want to tell the President that I'm retiring. I want to tell the President that I'm retiring. The President has been too busy. I want to tell you that he's been too busy. Former Governor Isaac Pai, he's been too busy. He's been too busy. He's been too busy. I want to tell you that he's been too busy. He's been too busy. The Senate is not going to be able to retire. The 11-434, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to tell you that Charles Desenguey Desmachutaro, who is the senior representative of the Senate, will retire. I want to tell you that the 24-376, I want to tell you that he acknowledged Dr. Fred McFarlane. I want to tell you that he acknowledged the outstanding service. I want to tell you that he acknowledged the invaluable contribution. I want to tell you that he acknowledged it. I want to tell the President that I'm retiring. I want to tell the President that I'm retiring. I want to tell the President that I'm retiring. I want to tell the House of Delegates, the 11-206, the House Joint Resolution, 11-7317S for consideration, Senate. I want to tell you that the appropriate partner will discuss. I want to tell the 11-206, the House Bill 11-19514H1. I want to tell the House of Delegates, 11-207. Information, the 7111, the 71ST2H2. The House 11-208, the Senate Bill 11-111ST4H5, the FY25 Budget Bill, the appropriate partner will discuss. I want to tell you that at 8:00, I want to tell you that I have unfinished business. I want to tell the first reading of the calendar. I want to tell the House Bill 11-19514H1.
Mr. President.
House Bill 11-19514H1. The 26 and 28 of the Pala National Code to facilitate the National Development Bank of Palau to accept deposits. The 26 and 28 of the Pala National Code will allow the National Development Bank to retire and accept the deposit. The 26 and 28 will allow the House of Delegates to retire and declare the anniversary of the election.
Mr. President. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to retire. I want to retire. I want to tell the President that I'm retiring. Leader of the Senate.
President, I want to tell the Senate that I'm retiring. I want to tell the Senate that I'm retiring. I want to tell the Senate that I'm retiring. I want to tell the Senate that I'm retiring.
I want to retire. I want to retire. Leader of the Senate.
President, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to tell the Senate that I'm retiring. Senate Bill 11-111ST4H5.
Mr. President.
Senate Bill 11-111ST4H5. The bill for the enactment of a budget law for fiscal year 2025 through the addition of the sum of 134,605,990 dollars and the appropriation of the amount of 129,397,143 from the National Treasury for the channel operations and special revenue and the purchase budget of the Republic of Palau for the fiscal year ending September 2025. To amend section 2 of the PPL 11-31 for the Ministry of Health, to amend section 4 of the PPL 11-31 for the NDBP loan restructuring, to amend section 1526 of Title 23 of PNC for voting polling places. The 26 and 28 will allow the National Treasury to retire in 2025. The 134,605,990 dollars will allow the National Treasury to retire 129,397,143 dollars and retire the government until September 2025. I want to tell the Senate, the PPL 11-31, for the Ministry of Health, and the 4 of the PPL 11-31, for the NDBP loan restructuring. I want to tell the 1526, Title 23 of the Pala National Code, for the election. The 26 and 28 will allow the President to retire.
Leader of the Senate.
President, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to tell the Senate that I'm retiring.
Senator Inabo.
President, I want to tell you that the House is increasing the budget for the national judiciary branch. I want to tell you that 300,000 will be in the Senate and the Memorial Chamber, the Reparation Committee, will include 15 senators. The House will retire the legal counselor, the House of Delegates. I want to tell you that the budget items will be in the budget. I want to tell you that the 300,000 will be in the Senate and the Rulya Chamber will include 15 senators. The House of Delegates will retire the public auditor by 200,000. The House of Delegates will reduce the appropriation of 3 million to Hawaii Medical Referral Housing. I want to retire the social security benefit payment by 2 million or 3 million. I want to tell you that the state governments will contribute 1 million, 1.5 million. I want to tell you that the three outlying states will contribute 50,000 dollars. I want to tell you that the state road construction will contribute 200,000. The state master plan, 50,000. The Angar State, 35,000. Ira State, road construction, 100,000. Atove State, solar PBE system, 23,000. Cayangal State Youth Program and Youth Center, 40,000. Order State Solid Waste Program, 250,000. Public Land Authority, 50,000. I mean, Ngarrard Water Line, 378,500. The SR State Public Land Authority, 50,000. I want to tell you that Abdalula Angarangalo will contribute 40,000. I want to tell you that the Office Market and Gas Station, 35,000. I want to tell you that the State Improvement, 90,000. I want to tell you that 15,000 will be in the federal constitutional state. I want to tell you that 60,000 will be in the budget. I want to tell you that the CIP project, 1.5 million. President, I want to tell you that the CIP project for the FY2025 election year will change. The oil will be lifted, the regular budget will be lifted, and the government will retire the capital improvement project. President, I want to tell you that the supplemental budget will be included. I want to tell you that the House will retire the budget. I want to tell you that the FY2025 budget will be included. I want to tell you that it will be implemented. I want to tell you that it will be implemented. I want to tell you that the government will retire the budget and will close the government. I want to tell you that the President will summarize the budget for fiscal year 2025.
Senator Inabo. Mr. President. Senator Mario.
President, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. 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 I want to tell you that the resolution will be cleared if the President is not willing to retire. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. 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 President.
Senator Mario. Mr. Mario. Leader of the Senate.
President, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. 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 Instead of housing, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. President, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. 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 President, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. 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 The state blockchain, 11 million, 13, 15 million total. It will add another 1.5 million. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. 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 Even though it takes a while, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. 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 While I'm retiring, I'm celebrating the anniversary of the independence. President.
Senator Inabo.
President, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. For the 2025 budget. First, I want to tell you that the senior citizens, 480, they only have authorization. They don't need appropriation. President, I want to tell you that 20 million from the US government will cover a pension plan. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. 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 480 will be included. President. The Senate, I want to tell you that the 24 million that became available from pension plan were authorized and appropriated to the 480. President, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. It was March. During that meeting, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to help the medical referral program. I want to tell you that 3 million is not enough. I want to tell you that 4 million, up to 6 million. So we really need the 3 million, at least to start the process. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. It's unfortunate that the position of the Congress is in the House. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I hope a resolution can be resolved. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. I want to tell you that very individual state projects will be included in the supplemental budget. I want to tell you that the projects will be included. I want to tell you that the delegates will understand. So it really comes down to priorities. I want to tell you that I'm retiring. 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 President.
Senator Inabo. Mr. Senator Sabau.
President, I want to tell you that I'm retiring. 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 I want to tell you that I'm retiring.
...
Mr. President, we need to support the resolution. If we don't understand the numbers, we will have to... Mr. President, I'm not sure if you understand. Mr. President, I want to ask you about other services that can improve. The issue is with the solar IPP, the delivery of expected savings. If we do this, we will have to pay for it. If we do this, we will realize savings. That's the service. If we do this, we will have to... Private companies, the insurance company, the contract, if we have to save the electricity, we will have to save. If we do this, we will have to force the other companies to do it. We say that's not right. We need to... We don't want to lose the electricity. We will have to contract for 20 years. We will have to sell solar more. Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, I think the senators... I think there is a question about clarification of the chairman. Chairman Mariur, yesterday, the telephone poles were used only for PPUC.
Senator.
Seventeen million?
Eighteen.
Eighteen million? And the hospital was used only for...
Oh, and yesterday, the telephone poles were used only for money. Did you spend all the money?
Senator Mariur.
The president said that the money... The money was used only for... The money was used only for... The money was used only for... I don't understand.
Mr. President, I think the cost saving is seventeen million, but the cost effectiveness of the system is... The project was made for PPUC, and the cost saving is... But the future cost analysis is... Mr. President, we need to... We need to... But the network metering act is created. And we have to stop it. We need to understand. On one side, we have to clean energy. And on one side, we have to... So, we need to stop our roof top in order to solve this problem. Because we don't know. We need to... As the committee on PPUC, the list is written down. The list is written down. It is written down efficiently. But we have to read the paper. We have to read the paper. We need to... We have to... We have to publish it. And if we publish it, we will have to look more. That's not correct.
Senator Lutteman.
Mr. President, I think the senator is... I want to ask you about PPUC. I think the government has to... I think the government has to... Mr. President, I think the government is... I think the government is... I want to ask you specifically about the model with PPUC. I want to ask you about the issue. We have to get the information. But we have to ask ourselves the question. Is the PPUC saving? Or is it solar? And, however, Mr. President, we have to understand. We have to get the information. We have to check the facts. We have to get the documentation. I want to ask you, Mr. President, if we do this, we will have to... We have to do this. I want to ask you, Mr. President.
Senator Basilius.
Mr. President, I want to ask you about the chairman. The vice president of the PPUC. The president has proposed a resolution. The basic law of the resolution is to stop... The tariff is not allowed. The chairman is implementing it. We have to change the tariff. If we do this, we will have to stop it. However, we have to change the resolution. The exercise is... We have to stop the tariff. We have to do this. We have to change the tariff. The size of the money is... We have to understand. We need to propose a resolution. Even though we have to change the rate of distributed energy, we have to replace it with a power. The fuel adjustment clause. The house is a facility. We have to check the power. The power is the size of the money. We have to understand the definition, the intent, the meaning. We have to make an effect. The base rate. We have to change the base rate. The base rate is operation cost. We have to change the power. We have to change the power. The regulations. The regulations. We have to change the base rate. We have to change the language. We have to change the energy cost. If I'm not mistaken, we have to change the language. We have to change the base rate. The power is the base rate. We have to change the base rate. We have to support the support. The chairman is supporting it. We have to... We have to change the power. 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 The distributed energy rate. The tariff. I mean... We have to change the tariff. Renewable energy. We have to change the tariff. The chairman... We have to change the tariff. We have to calculate the calculations. We have to change the power. We have to... I don't understand.
Maria Som, the president. We have to change the power.
The power is... The size of the tariff. Support. Thank you.
Senator Ludim.
Mr. President, I want to ask you about the information. We have to... It is correct to use four cents. The solar IPP, Mr. President, is minimum twenty megawatts and maximum twenty-three megawatts. At fourteen point two five cents. The average is twenty percent. The delivery is twenty megawatts. Twenty percent of hundred megawatts. About hundred megawatts. And fourteen point two five cents of twenty megawatts. Two point eight five million. We have to divide it into twelve months. We have to divide it into twelve months. It is claimed. We have to save the power. We multiply it by the total aggregate. The total kilowatt hours. We have to save it. The four cents times the hundred. Two point eight five. The charges are equal. We have to do it. Double charge for the solar IPP. We have to stop it. The resolution is stopped. We have to regulate it. Use PPUC. With that, Mr. President, let's stop. We have to regulate it. The IPP is fifty million. We have to involve the government. We have to stop it. It is a second round. The resolution is... We have to stop it. We have to... It is possible to have an error. It is possible to obscure the number. We have to check the cost. We have to... Mr. President, I think... The obscure is possible. The energy is... Private companies are allowed. The other companies are allowed. Because of the PPUC, we realized savings. The solar IPP. Mr. President.
Senator Sombo.
Mr. President, I want to ask you about the money. We have to understand. The audit report, Mr. President, was published in 2019. We have to... The billings are... The billings of the PPUC are accurate. We have to check the power. The internal controls of the PPUC are accurate. We have to check the accuracy of fuel purchases. The audit report, Mr. President, is... The PPUC establishes internal controls procedures, ensures the system generates billing reports, properly reviewed and reconciled for completeness and accuracy before a computer checks. We have to... We have to... We have to... Mr. President, we have to start the billing process. The audit is... We have to check the internal controls. The billings are accurate before a computer checks. If we want to resolve it, we have to... We have to make it accurate. We have to make it accurate. We have to... Mr. President, we have to discuss it. We have to move forward. We have to... We have to stop it. We have to... The chairperson has to move forward. We have to move forward.
Mr. Mariur.
Mr. President, I think the... We have to... We have to... We have to save the power. We have to save the power. We have to save the power. We have to reply. Without your concern, let's proceed. We have to proceed. The regulation is... We have to... We have to... We have to include the islands between Ireland and Norway. We have to include the solar. We have to... We have to... We have to... We have to calculate the solar. We have to... The president is... The base space is... Calculator is... We have to... The president is... He has to... He has to... He has to... We have 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 to... On October 1st. We have to... We have to... We have to...
I want to ask you. I want to ask you. Yes? I think we have to... Senate Joint Resolution Number 1153. I want to talk. Thank you.
Mr. President, I think we have to... Continue. The 1314. We have to... Misileonis Communication. We have to... The Minister... The... We have to... Independent State Fair Organization Committee. I invite the president to make an opening of the liberal remarks. The official ceremony is... On October 1st. Next, the 111312. Communication with the WPL. We have to... More representation matters. Women. More women to power. More power to women. Our workshops and friends. September 23 and 24. We have to... We have to... The Misileonis Communication 111313. We have to... The WPL. The UNGA 79. September 24. Next, the communication. The Reykjavik Global Forum. We have to... We have to attend the Reykjavik Global Forum 2024. Next, the Misileonis Communication 111315. The Senate President Paulas. We have to attend the Global Parliamentary Forum 2024. Next, 111316. We have to... We have to... Climate Vulnerable Forum. We have to... Climate Prosperity Plan Investor Parliament Session. Next, 111317. The president, Takanosuna, is... Information executive Clements is... The president. We have to... The Misileonis Communication 111318. The president, Paulas. The Misileonis Communication 111319. We have to... The... The... The executive Clements. Mr. Tagasi. We have to transmit the communication. We have to... A proposal amendment to the Drug Testing Policy. Law enforcement. Law enforcement officers. We have to... We have to... The Misileonis Communication 111321. We have to... Regular solicitation amendment. We have to... The president is continuing the business. We have to...
Senator.
Mr. President, this week, actually, the election continued. We have to... Joint Committee Meeting. We have to... The president is... He has been... He has been... The meeting was held in... Actually, the JCM meeting was held at Summer House. It was inappropriate. We have to... We have to... The... The US military. We have to... Hospital. We have to... During the JCM meetings. It is an interesting subject. The Blackpink. Supplemental batches of language. Increase penalties for fentanyl and other opioid derivatives. And I found out at that meeting, that already, a number of... Forty-five thousand dollars. It is detected within a room. It is in that space. We have to... We have to... The government. Secondly, Mr. President, we have to... The president, Paulas, attended the United Nations General Assembly. We have to... We have to... We have to... Firstly, we have been... Prime Minister. We have to... The president attended the last meeting. We have to... Sign the Federal Services and Programs Agreement. We have to... We have to... Police and others. Veterans and so forth. We have to... Negotiate with Mr. Caleb Udo Jr. A witness. The president, Joseph Biden. The president. He has been... Lastly, we have to... We have to... Many years ago, we have to... United Nations. The government. We have to... And we have wondered when this building will actually be used. We have to... I am happy to say. Sure. We have to... The next week, eight hundred dollars a night, up to one thousand two hundred dollars a night. And... We have to attend the meeting. The opening. UN Permanent Office. And guess what? I am staying in that building. The hotel is expensive. Eight hundred to one thousand dollars a night. We have six rooms. We have to... The... The official government. New York. We have to... We have to...
Senator. I want to ask you. Announcement. We have to extend the special session. Five more days. We have to... We have to extend. Okay? We have to... I want to talk. Please.
Mr. President, I want to... I want to... I want to... An announcement. The special session. Another three days.
Five days.
Five days. The president is... The subject is...
The motion is... We have to... I want to talk. Thank you.